All right, let's rise for the last salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I can get a motion from one of our board members to-
Motion to open the meeting?
Okay, Member Umberto made the motion to open the meeting and-
Great.
And Member Kelly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed, meeting is opened on, um, all right. Okay, so, let me just take a roll call of our board and then of our professionals. Member Allen?
Present.
Member Boucher, present. Member Hefnecker?
Present.
I know Member Ayunuchi is absent tonight and Member Carlich will also be absent tonight. Member Kelly?
Present.
Member Umberto?
Here.
Attorney Cassidy?
Cassidy.
Attorney O'Rourke?
Present.
And I think that's all we have and all we need for tonight. Um, sometimes comes something-
He sent an email earlier today saying he wasn't there.
Oh, I missed that one. That he wasn't coming?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so first up on our agenda is the Monroe Woodbury Islamic Center. What we, what order of business we have tonight is really to pass, you know, a resolution for the public hearing. But I know that the applicant has brought in, um, we don't have it on the One Drives right now, but he wanted to show us, he has the lighting plan so that we can see it and the landscape planned by Esposito. But Steve couldn't be here tonight, so he'll be here at a later date. But this is just for our, just to show us, so, you know, I'll turn it over to you gentlemen.
Good evening, Ryan Nasher from Atso Nash and Ziegler, we are the engineers and the surveyor. We have here along, he is the president of the mosque, the applicant. The attorney, he's the applicant attorney. We have the traffic consultant from DTS Providence, Steve isn't here. We are expecting the architect to come in any time. He's coming from New Jersey, maybe he's setting traffic, but he should be coming in any minute.
I'm sorry, who is the gentleman behind?
Right behind us, Steve.
Yeah. Steve what?
Steve Turbide, with DT has a problem.
Thank you.
Just to give you the background of the project, we went before the planning board several times. We heard your concern, we heard the recommendation and comment from your consultant. We have revised the site plan numerous times and this is the final product, the pest-
Can you speak into the microphone?
Ryan, yeah, you could, you could pull the microphone back to you if you want. You can bring it back.
Speak into it.
Okay, good. Okay, how about now, is it better?
Yeah, so if you, if you want to move it back so you're not in the way of your board, feel free to move the microphone back.
Can you take that off there?
The microphone?
The microphone.
Good.
It's in your hand and you're free to walk.
Oh, yeah, perfect.
Yeah, thank you.
There you go.
Like I'm a singer now.
There you go.
Just don't drop the mic.
Okay, good, perfect, thank you. So, um, we were at the workshop, was it last week or two weeks ago? And that time Steve, Steve Esposito, he's our landscape architect, he'd been working on it and the plan wasn't really ready. I just got it and it was not submitted to you, but I would just want to show it to you. But it will be submitted when we set the public hearing and I just want to show you what he had presented.
Okay.
Basically, this is our property line, maybe just-
Ryan, you know what, if you don't mind, just turn it sideways, we, you know, we could see it so the board can, there you go. That's, that's perfect.
Is it better? Okay.
Yeah, that's great.
All right, so, I'm not the landscape architect, but I'm going to just go over with what he presented. Basically, if you look at this, this side of the neighborhood, which is really the south side, is really the high side, is really low. And if you look at to the west side, it's really match with the grade. So what he did, he put all those green giant arriba, those big circles that shows over here, is all around over here, go back and up to here. And he also combined with the trees and the shrub to the south side and also to the front. He didn't really put the big trees because of the traffic side distance. If you put too much, the traffic getting out, they're not going to be seeing the traffic that's coming from north to south. And, um, the, if I flip the page over, it has the color presentation how the full grown tree would look like.
Okay.
So if I flip it over, it's really those big trees, the green giant arriba.
Mm-hmm.
He has the picture over here and he doesn't have the picture for the white spruce, which is really grow pretty, you know, big. And it could grow up to probably like in a 50 feet and it grow every year, like, you know-
Those are in the side or the back?
This is for the side, side, to the north side and also the, the west side.
Okay.
All right. So I requested for him to come in and explain more, but this is pretty much, you know, what he's going to be presenting.
Mm-hmm.
The architect also going to bring the material sample, you know, actual sample that, you know, show it to you, like, you know, how the building are look like and everything. This is the way we're going to show, hey, this is what is going to be built and, you know, we could really match it, you know, as believe it matches, you know, how the, they should be. Uh, we also prepared the lighting plan that was prepared by Lab Lighting and I could really show it to you, like, you know, how the lighting plan look like. Okay, so I'll just flip over here. So in terms of the lighting, the way the IES standard works, we got to show the foot candle analysis. We got to show that property line doesn't have the impact of the neighbor property. If someone driving to the north or the south, it doesn't really clear their driver's eyes. So it shows all along the property to the east, west, north and the south, they have maximum number of lemons point one. This is what is really the, you know, the, um, the recommended number not to exceed point one. And it's been proposed, one, two, three, four, five, five, uh, lighting pole on the parking lot. And the remaining, I believe, is a 19, uh, light, which is a wall pack all around the building. Now, the next, the other one-
Those lights, were, are they on the building or are they independent off the building?
This is all outside, outside on the building.
But is it attached to the building?
On the building?
This is going to be attached to the building, but the, the lighting on the, on the parking lot is going to be lighting pole.
So the lights that are on the building, are they, they're projecting away from the building?
Uh, correct, correct. So now if I show the, uh, the rendering, you're going to see how it's going to look like at night,
Yeah.
which is really the other side and- So it's really pretty much, you're going to see at night. And if you look at it over here, this is the property line, it's all dark. This side, this is also the property line to the, uh, to the west side. And it does show there is no impact on the lighting. They use really low voltage lighting, LED, and it really shows just the adequate light for the safety of the congregation for, you know, for their use, but it doesn't really impact to the surrounding neighbors. This is not submitted for the review, but we're going to submit to the, uh, the planning board secretary in couple of days. He's ready to go, we're going to just submit it. And, um, I know that we discussed about the meeting, it could be maybe December or November, but since we have all the materials ready and we would like to submit for the November meeting and we understand that we're taking a risk that it's going to be, um, the other project is on the way and the, uh, the president, they would like to be friendly with the neighbor, you know. If the neighbor has any questions or any concern, anything they want to, like, you know, want us to do, they are happy to accommodate if it really meet the code. So that, this is the way they are looking at it.
Mm-hmm.
And if you have any question, I could answer you. Or I'm going to have the architect, you know, going over the, uh, you know, the layout because some of the board members was not present, so I would, it can be opportunity for them to look at it.
Okay, did you, um, did we set the 208, Elizabeth, do you remember, for the 28?
We haven't selected a date, I gave them three dates to choose from.
We set the date for November, we may have to schedule, but when we last spoke at the work session and I've drafted all the documents for the November, December 11th meeting for this applicant to give them time to make the submission, um, also in account for the 208 public hearing, but we technically set the 208 public hearing.
For the 28th?
For the 28th, yes.
Of November, right.
We may have to revise that, but we have set the-
Right. But if we don't, if that is where we set it and it stays, then you guys might, you probably would go the following. It, we have one meeting in December anyway and it's early.
Right, 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 yeah.
So it'll be a matter of a couple of weeks would be different.
You've got, the 208 project is a-
Massive, yeah.
Big project.
Yeah, you would-
And to put two public hearings.
You wouldn't want them together.
Okay.
Yeah, because it would be two, if there's people that come for this and people that come for that, we'd be-
So it's really not much of difference, 28 versus it being 11, right?
I think it's whatever, yeah, I could tell you in a second, um, it's, uh- I think it is, I'm just going to verify. Yes, it's the 11th and that's a combined meeting, it's a special meeting for that day. We'll have the, you know, the workshop and the, uh, so it'll, it'll, it'll be everything. It's our catchall meeting for, for December.
For December.
So it's really, it's not even, it's a, it's a week and a half later.
So when it going to be the next workshop then for the December, it going to be on?
December, it'll be that same night.
The same night going to be workshop?
Right, so-
It's going to be two meetings in one.
And a, and a public hearing.
Because of the holidays.
If we did schedule it for that, so.
To be clear, if they, so none of, John and I haven't looked at this and I believe-
Right.
Traffic has been referred to Andrea and she's getting up ready for the next work session. If they made their submission and submitted the materials that they presented tonight, because right now this is-
They have till the 3rd to, to submit.
Make that submission, um, they would be on the-
11th.
No, they would be on the November work session. The reason we're scheduling now instead of the November meeting is because the December meeting, there's not enough time. It would be very tight turnaround to get the notices.
Right.
So normally we would have received that submission, processed it at the work session and then scheduled the public hearing at our regular meeting, the, um, 28th for December to try to facilitate and move along. We're agreeable, we think the project's far enough along that we can schedule a public hearing for the 11th so that the two processes are happening simultaneously.
Right. Yeah, so I think that's, that's the path.
That's fine and, you know, it's going to be, um, you know, the public can set up anyways, you know, so it's going to be December 11th, that's fine. It's not much of difference between 28 and-
No, it's like a week and a half if that, yeah.
That's fine, that's fine.
I do prepare our submission.
Yeah, so we want to get to that, does the board have any thoughts or questions? You guys didn't get to review it yet, this is really just a informal kind of shout to that. John hasn't seen it yet, you know.
Further shout to the traffic consultant, Andrea?
She's, she's preparing.
She's preparing something.
Yes, so all of that will happen, all of that has to be in before, it just has to be in before the 3rd of November so that, you know, we move forward with it, so it'll be in time for the November meetings.
When is the busiest time for the mosque, is it Friday afternoon?
Uh, Friday afternoon, early afternoon. The, the-
Between 12 and 2 or so?
The congregation is said to come in at 1 o'clock and the praying starting 1:30. And prayer finish up like around 2 o'clock, so they leave at 2 o'clock. So 2 o'clock is a peak and they get in at 1 o'clock, so 1 and 2 is a peak time.
So I think I saw, I saw, it's about 180 people coming in now and you guys want to grow the congregation to 230, is that right?
Excuse me, say it again?
I thought I saw in, in your traffic study that there are 180 people coming in now on Fridays, is that right?
Correct, correct, yes, yes.
You're trying to grow the mosque to 230, is that right?
Well, they, they count it, uh, when the traffic guy was here, they can count it up to 230, 25%, I think it was, or 20%? Was that what it was? Increase to 230, that's, that's what they did for the study. Oh, there he is, right there.
I don't think we had a number, like, the congregation number in our study, but we did take the traffic and grow it for future design. So we did increase the site traffic by about 25%. We didn't have to grow the conservator, we don't think it's going to be that high, but we did increase the site traffic by 25%.
That brings it to the 230.
Okay.
I have a question, you mentioned about the, uh, the material sample. Would you want us to bring that on December meeting or?
Yep, so submit it and what he should do is drop the materials off-
Okay.
Here, because then we can look at them ahead of time as well as the meeting.
Sure.
So, yeah, everything, just have everything in by November 3rd.
Okay, could I ask him to come over so you can just coordinate? Ahmed, are you here? So, uh, if you could step over here. So before you came in, we talked about it, they would like to see the sample of the materials for the building, like in the siding, you know, type of-
Yeah, along with the product number, serial number, product number. And then, that's just, it's only because of past issues that we've had where we'll approve one thing, something else goes on the building. This way it gets approved with the materials in the plan, so.
So this board is a planning board and also the architecture review board as well, so they would like to see that, make sure that is okay.
If you'd like to bring it in, it would probably be best to bring it to my office, which is upstairs. Okay. And I'm here Tuesdays and Thursdays. Yeah, because it's just bulky for that office to handle.
And when does that have to be applied?
By, by the 3rd.
By the 3rd.
Also by the 3rd, got it, okay.
Great, okay, is that it?
How long is the mosque for that?
How long?
How long?
Do you know when it's been?
We bought this place, uh, 2015, September 19th.
And it was meeting since that date or you did work before it? I think, I know you did work.
We just changed it to make it clear of this.
Yeah, so you started meeting?
I think, uh, December.
Okay, so a couple of months later. Any other questions? Nope, I think we're good, we'll just, um, are you good, Ryan?
Anybody wanted to see the, the architecture plan since Phil, the bill board member was not there or it's up to you? He's here, he could present it or?
So it's-
The, the architecture plan, the, uh-
Fred, were you here last meeting for this?
No, I was sick.
Oh, then maybe you'd want to see it then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We're going to show the overview, yeah.
They're going to be submitted as, and you don't care what it, no, it sounds grassy, he doesn't care what it looks like.
Okay.
Right, yeah, for the, for those purposes, but if you want to just take it real quickly, yeah. Yeah, that'd be, you know, that'd be fine. Do me a favor, just, you can hold the mic if you want or, or talk into it, just-
Yeah, just talk into it.
Raise it up for your height wise, whatever.
Uh, so this time we decided to just bring the renderings printed, that way it's just clear. I can either pass them around or, next time maybe I can use also the TV.
Only put it on the board to explain it one at a time and then we can pass them around if they want to look at it.
Just put it on the board, um, so that works?
It does, so when you-
It does, but we don't have the digital file for what you have.
No, no, I'm saying next time I can send them ahead of-
Absolutely, if we meet down here, you can do that.
We will if it's a-
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
All right. Yeah, just, yeah, just leave it, just leave it, I'll, I'll take care of it, it's okay, I got it, I got it. All right, so, so this is, um, a quick presentation of the, of the drawings for the mosque themselves. These are 3D, uh, illustrations of the exterior of the mosque, which I'll take you through right now. Uh, for the board members that were here last time, they'll remember this, so sorry if I'm, sound like a broken record. But, uh, this is what's existing today. The, the existing, uh, building right here and the two sheds in the back. And those are all being, uh, proposed to be demolished. And then the proposed site plan, as Ryan was showing, the parking in the front, one ingress and egress here and then the mosque is situated towards the back. After the mosque, the actual, the topography drops down drastically. There's a difference between about 12 feet from this point to the back here. This is the roof plan, the massing as you'll see in the renderings and in the plans. We have two massings here, one is a little bit higher than the other and represents the prayer space. This is the basement level, the lower level. The lower level, uh, has a multipurpose space and, um, mechanical rooms, a conference area and it's accessed through a ramp, which you'll see on the first floor. And you come down here, there's also stairs bringing you down from the entry level to the basement level and elevator. Uh, the multipurpose room, because of the drop of the topography on site, it actually has windows along this area and the conference room also gets all windows, so everything you can actually look out and you can walk out if you wanted to. There are no doors though for you to walk out, but- The, the ground floor space is, this is the main plaza. So if you're parking, you're coming from this way or this way. This is a gathering space right outside the mosque. This is the main entrance here. The entrance is on a different axis than the prayer space itself. As you come in, there are a few classrooms on the left here that are used for Sunday school. And then this is the main prayer area for men on the ground floor. Uh, on the ground floor also, there are a couple of offices for the administration of the mosque and then an office for the Imam or the, or the leader of the congregation. On the second floor, or the mezzanine level I should say, is the women's prayer area. They have an elevator access, the two stairs and a kids' area in the back. Uh, the same amenities as the first floor, it was exactly for the prayer space. I'm gonna, this time I'm just going to skip to the, because the sections and elevations, but this can show it a little better. You can put all three, yeah. Thank you, Mustafa. So this is what we're envisioning the exterior of the mosque would look like. It is actually white stucco with these geometric patterns and, uh, simple floral palette here that's also, um, Islamic geometry. Uh, and then we have metal, uh, copper metal panel over here with perforated metal panel of the same material, just perforated like CNC cut. Um, and marble at the entrance of the mosque itself. This is the same view, just at night, with the windows all lit up from the inside, so you can see the lighting, the lights glowing outside. Same thing with the entrance and then the pattern also is lit. And this is the aerial view, the plaza area that I'm talking about with the parking and then you can see the two different massings, one is higher than the other, which is representing this, uh, this prayer space area, space area, uh, prayer space. And then behind it are the classrooms and the offices, um, and this is again the main entrance. So this is brief, but, uh, basically captures the full picture.
And you don't have the lighting poles on there?
I do not have the lighting poles in here now. This was done prior to the fi, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. Uh, now with the, uh, with the screening on the outside, is that going to be mature stuff? Or are you going to try with four foot and try to grow?
We're trying, we're going to try with four foot and grow. But there's already existing trees on the outside today, so what we're adding is basically just more shielding, more privacy, but there's existing today, yeah.
Is there a dumpster there as well?
Yes, in that area. This is in the parking corner, which is also screened with landscaping and there is a fence.
Quick question, as you're talking the screening, you're talking about the-
Landscaping.
The vegetation.
The canopy and the whole.
The height, yes.
Yeah.
The maturity of the trees.
So the Steve Esposito, he showed the green giant going to be 7 to 8 feet high.
Starting or they grow up to?
Starting is 7 to 8 feet.
But, but they're not everywhere, right? So just to be clear, there are the, the large ones, there, it shows on the plan, there are large ones in certain areas and the other ones are going to be growing.
So he's taken the cover, I think they have 46.
Yes.
Number of, um-
Added trees, correct.
The green giant, those are color and then a combination of, like, the sidewalk and the front and the landscaping, I don't know.
Which is, which is lower in the front based on the comments that we had gotten before for traffic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And now the, the lighting on the exterior, is that going to go out at a certain time or is it going to be all night?
That's something that we can control because it's, it's, we can put a dusk to dawn sensor on it. But just to answer your question from before, because I, I heard your question, if you're, you're asking if the lights are going to be basically glowing to the outside.
Yeah, because there's a whole neighborhood.
All the lights, correct, but all the lights that we selected together and we were talking about the colors of the lights themselves, light fixture itself, they're all downlights.
Okay.
Nothing is going to be glowing to the, like, you know, upwards or to the front.
Not projected, right?
No, it's not projecting, it's not going to create any problems to someone that's driving and there's just like, this thing is beaming out. They're all downlights and we were very careful with that.
Yeah, you're far enough off the, the street, what I'm saying is you're backing up against Maidstone back there.
Right.
You know, and just don't want four foot trees and then they're like, oh, well, in like six years, we'll, we'll finally have enough.
No, you have, no, you have enough and, and the lights are all basically, and, and the lighting plan shows that too.
So now at the parking lot, so the lighting is going to be 7 to 8 feet tall and the lighting fixture is going to be all downward.
Okay.
But that's the parking lot, that's the parking lot.
That's the parking lot.
He was, he was thinking more the back of the building.
He was talking about the back of the, the ones, the ones that are mounted onto the building in the back.
That will be shielded and then really 20 feet down.
Down, right.
Yes.
If you're putting back an hour and it's option, if you look at the rendering, is, you know, the right rendering?
Yeah, it looked like it was going down right there, yeah.
It is, and the light fixture shows it too, the selection of the light fixture, I don't know if you have it, Ryan? It was on the drawings.
Just to clarify that, depending on how high they put it, it's nice that it goes down because there's a house behind it and there are 20 feet, that person's going to still see that light, so that's-
Correct.
So where they place the lights matter?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So for the wall pack, it's going to be 15 feet, but the lighting hole is 5 feet, 5 feet lower than the, uh, the lighting, you know, the, the lighting hole from the parking lot, 5 feet lower.
Okay.
But, but to your point also, just so we're addressing all the points, this is all the lower level, right? This is the lower building in the back, not the higher side, so this is all, the top of it is about 11, 12 feet from grade.
So then, so then it won't be 15 feet, is what you're saying, Ryan? So if it's only 12 feet high, the, the lighting is not going to be 15 feet on the back?
No, no, I'm saying this, the, the parapet could be 15 feet, right? But I'm saying it's not going to be 25 or 30 feet, it's not going to be any-
The lighting itself of the fixtures, how high off the ground?
If it's-
The lighting fixtures actually could be 15 feet.
If, it's at the parapet.
So John, what-
The concern is, again, it's the rear of the building, but that's where the residence is.
Yeah.
So if it's 15 feet high and I'm in my backyard sitting in my chair, I'm seeing the light is, is the concern.
So will you be able to tell on the engineering of it when you see it if it's, because you won't have the grade of the homes surrounding?
No, but I know what they are and we actually have stucco from that side.
Okay, so that's what I was, okay.
That's a concern, so it's going down, but it's, it's out and we want to live in that. So again, if you have, again, it's, I don't know if it's for security lighting, you have those lights in the back, but if you can have those, you know, soft and gentle and- Sure, yeah, we could, absolutely.
Or, or even lower as well, because 15 feet high, like, the lights back there, is it just, is it security? Is it, like, what are you having lights behind the building for?
It's just for the safety, for their use, the congregation.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So they can walk behind there, they can walk outside there?
It's, 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 it's-
Back, not the rear of the building, right? You don't have any proposed light, there's no leading center, there's no gathering point.
And you, so people aren't walking out there?
Security.
No. It's, it's only really for security.
Okay.
You can keep it down, because that's the only-
Nobody's going to be using the back of the building.
So just maybe bring it lower and solve it.
Too many conversations, you're a concern.
Sorry.
It's okay.
No, it's, it's, it's all this. Okay, hang on. Do you hang on one second? So, go ahead, John, finish what you were saying.
So Ryan said they can modify the lights, but there's nothing- So Ryan said they can modify the lights, but there's nothing going on back there, other than security.
Right.
So having them lower and softer lights should be fine.
Yeah.
They'll take a look at that.
Yep, perfect.
Yeah, so, yeah, maybe if you do have timers on the lights, so at a certain time it does turn off. And then if, let's just say someone has to get to an office back there, maybe if you put path lighting along there, you know what I mean? Just so when those big lights are turned off, it's, it gets dark back there. You know, I'm, I'm kind of in that area over there, and I'm in Presbyk Phase Two, though. But I do have a lot of darkness behind me, and I appreciate the darkness, because that's why I bought that area right there. I just wanna make sure that continues for the other neighbors that are around there, that they have that privacy, you know?
I agree, I agree.
Yeah, so maybe the path lights could be that extra if someone needs to just...
And we would have to put path lights, because the ramp that we were showing before that wraps around this ramp is going down and grade is still up. So you're actually going down, you know, as you're walking, so you have to put some...
But it doesn't go behind the building, Ahmed, right?
It wraps behind the building just up to this point. Can I get the plan again? Just, because I think it's easier to explain.
Oh, so there's no walking on the backside of that?
No, so there's no walking, yeah, I wanna show it just so it's clear.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I thought somebody was gonna be able to, like, try to get in through that way, like the board.
No, so, so, so basically, the ramp starts here, and it goes down, 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 and you enter at this point, right? So you're not wrapping...
Also, that's the back, right there, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so this is more of the side, right? This is, this is all the back.
So there's no sidewalks back there, there's no...
No, there's nothing happening back here.
So it's just for security.
And, and if someone, and if someone is in the building at night, in the offices or anything like that, they have windows and they have lights in their, you know, their room itself.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so you'll, you'll look at it, Ryan, and take a look and adjust.
That's why, and we are looking at the different fixture.
Yeah.
And then I spread this morning, they're saying just provide information and then revise it. And in terms of the height, they just pick a generic height, you know? It doesn't have to be fifteen and a fifty or a hundred and a half, but that's not a problem.
Can I get the elevations on here?
Don't forget, we do lose the existing natural shading or screening when all the leaves go down. I mean, I can see straight through and see Presbyk Phase One, like, there's nothing in the way.
So, so this is...
The leaves are down.
This is what I wanted to show before. So this is here, this is the back, and this is where the multipurpose is. And at that level, the, this is much lower, so at this point, this is the top side of the building here. So all the lights can be down here, so, and I can talk to Ryan about this. So this is from here to here, it's twelve feet.
Okay, so that's...
So we can actually put the lights, we can put the lights much lower here, rather than on top.
Right.
Because there's no need to, there's no need to wash down the entire facade. Nobody's looking at it, nobody is interested in looking at the back of the building or even wants to see it at night, right? But if we put it down here, this would just provide that privacy that we're looking for, and then it wouldn't be, you know, shedding light further than, we can, we can also pick the fixture that doesn't throw more than fifteen, twenty feet, which is more than plenty of space before the property line.
Sure, thank you.
Yeah, when they prepare the lighting plan, they didn't have the little information, so they just pick generally, generally. We could, we could walk it out, and when the parking lot grows up, of course, it's gonna be landscaping.
Yeah.
And over the years, it's gonna grow, and in the winter, it's gonna be, so it's gonna grow generally. And of course, it's gonna be all the wrong, so it's just a matter of time.
Time, yeah, yeah.
Plus, I already disagreed with the lights, because they're black, and I don't think they should be black on a white building, so, right, change.
Okay, good, all right, so just get everything submitted by the third, and then we'll, you know, we'll, we'll take a, go ahead, John.
I'm sorry, two things, just that I'm looking, we're gonna go slightly. But just check your building height and access, because it appears that even though your building height may be less than required, you know, you have that, looks like you have like a facade on the top of it that you're kind of hiding everything. So for fire access, typically, if it's over thirty feet, you have to meet the New York State Fire Code for fire access, so take a look at that.
Oh, fire, fire access for, for the parking and, you know, the traffic minimum?
No, for the, for the building, right? New York State Building Code, if you look at Appendix D, has a requirement. So if a building is over a certain size or a certain height, you have to have a fire apparatus access road where you can reach around the entire building.
Sure.
So with that parapet that you have on that, which kind of essentially makes your thirty-foot-high building a thirty-five or thirty-six-foot-high building, that can be an issue. So I'm just saying, take a look at that, because I don't wanna go through this whole process and the building department says, yeah, this doesn't pass, and you need an access road, which you don't have. So take a hard look at that.
Sure.
Good point, that's a good point.
The parapet, what, does the thing down there?
No, he's talking about, in the front, with the parapet, actually goes up higher.
That's fifty feet, right?
Oh, you're thinking of the spire type thing?
You're talking about, yes, exactly, that, that is much higher. But he's talking about the areas where the parapet actually grows.
Gotcha.
Good. Any questions from the board? No?
No more, no.
Elizabeth, can I, thank you, gentlemen, great presentation. Elizabeth, can you read into the record the resolution to set the public meeting?
Sure, I apologize, I'm reading from my phone, because we know a period of internet service and it's lying system, so bear with me and my eyes. Whereas the Villas of Monroe Clinic Board is in receipt of an application by Monroe to do their long central recycling, to construct a place of religious assembly consisting of the footprint of fourteen thousand five hundred ninety-six square feet, with a total square footage of approximately twenty-five hundred square feet, a hundred and two apartment spaces and outdoor transportation space. There is a short environmental assessment form dated August first, twenty twenty-two, last revised June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, just submitted for review. Regarding comparing the thresholds in six, NYCRR six seventeen point four and five, the planning board has determined that the proposed project is an unlisted action and declared itself to be lead agency pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act by Resolution dated July twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. And now therefore be resolved that the planning board shall hold a public hearing on December eleventh, twenty twenty-three, at seven P.M. or soon thereafter. As the application may be heard, the Village Hall Seven Stage Road, Monroe, New York, one zero nine five oh. Be it further resolved that the applicant shall be required to transmit public notice in accordance with the Village of Monroe Code. And I'm not gonna read it into the record of my resolution. For ease, I have copied and pasted the mail-in and newspaper requirements into the resolution for ready reference. I have also prepared public notice, which when we can get into OneDrive, should be uploaded into the OneDrive, ready to go. So if I have that motion.
Good. Okay, so we just need a motion to approve the resolution?
Make a motion to approve the resolution as read by Attorney Cassidy.
Okay, Member Kelly makes a motion, second?
I'll second.
Okay, Member Allen's second, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries, so the public meeting will be December eleventh.
And Rhonda, again, the resolution is in the OneDrive, so you can just add it.
That's there too, okay, thank you.
It should theoretically, it's there.
Okay.
So it's all submitted materials by November third, and it just wasn't clear to me if we need to come or should we come before a work session in November or prior to the December meeting?
Don't need...
So what I have...
Well, it depends, yeah.
What I have based on the discussion is submission by November third, with anticipated discussion, Andrea will have had a comment, our Andrea, our consular will have had a comments, John and I will review what we discussed tonight.
Yeah.
So we can utilize that work session to hammer out any issues, and then the public hearing. I do not see a need for you to come on the November regular meeting on the twenty-eighth. So that's, that's what I would say. For, I would plan on the work session.
Right.
That's fine.
And then we can hammer out any final issues.
Sometimes names go by often.
Yeah. But not on the twenty-eighth.
Okay, no, I understand. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. All right, before we return. Andrea, okay. So next up, and you guys saw this was a late addition, so let me give you a little bit of quick background here. We, Somni came before us, the applicant, to relocate his restaurant from in the town right now on two oh eight to in the village on Lake Street. And we had a little bit of an unusual situation where the town actually owns the building and the villa, but it's in the village. And just, you know, it was just an unusual situation. And, and Mr. Nala had a, has a lease to purchase the building. And now it looks like the purchase may be going through, he'll tell us, but it could be sooner than initially thought. But anyway, there was quite a bit of confusion from the outset on things, because it was two government entities, who does what, who, who looks at what, who inspects what? And unfortunately, Mr. Nala got caught like a ping pong ball in the middle between two governing bodies. And it was less than helpful and dragged out a long time to get the right things from where he needed to get it from. So we told him back then, you know, as soon as you're ready to move forward, as soon as you've got your stuff together, you know, come back before us. So we're not gonna resolve anything for him tonight, but what he does need to know, and we could talk to him about some of the things, but I wanna give you an update, have him give you an update of where he's at, what we're looking at, and hopefully, we can get them moving in the right direction and get this worked out, you know, with, with all haste. And so, not positive, everything got divided up, but I know Jim weighed in on a couple of things. I know, you know, the balancing test was involved, was involved there for what communities do, that's a standard, that's not, has nothing to do with us. But, you know, then you have the town owning a building that is not being used for town use. It's being leased to a private enterprise. So there's all kinds of things, because normally, people don't pay tax, like one municipality owning another. So all of that was being discussed, and all of this was just, you know, dragging on more and more, I think, on the town side than anything. But I think, you know, in a conversation, you know, I really want to give Mr. Nala everything he needs so he can come back to us now. It looks like he's got everything worked out. What we were looking for at the last time that we met together was a solution to the trash, and the town was promising five parking spots or five or six spots behind the building, but, you know, a little bit further back. Town owned also. And, and then also, I think, there was a, something came up was a problem with refrigeration. So the refrigeration then needed a solution. So that's looking like it's gonna go out from what their solution is to where the parking spaces are. So it'll be on ground level, out in, you know, the parking spaces. At any rate, you know, we just wanted to get him before us so he could get prepared to get us what we need to make our final decisions for him, so, John?
If I could, just quickly, because I, again, just got this look at it.
Yep.
The board did approve the restaurant use, that's been approved.
Correct.
Unfortunately, no map has been signed, they never submitted it, so that approval is pretty much expired.
Right.
When you go through this process again, you're gonna have to reapprove that. The other issue I looked at, and again, as you move forward, the town or whoever kind of proposed several coolers on a parking lot.
Yes.
That lot is its own separate lot. You can't have accessory uses only on a lot, right? So they're not proposing a building, they're not proposing a house, they're just proposing a cooler on that lot, which is not allowed under your zoning, just to have that. So they're gonna have to go to the ZBA to give that to that. That's probably their first step, is make application to, the land use application we did before. Jim put through saying, yeah, you don't need zoning for this, this, and this, and send them to the ZBA. Now, they can still come here at the same time, so it's not a, you don't...
Times, right.
Delay, that's why I'm bringing this down.
Yeah, yeah.
But with that, and then, you know, the same thing, when you're just a parking lot and putting three coolers out there, you know, there's no electricity out there, so, you know, you have to show where that's coming from. So there's some issues associated with that, and also they're losing parking, so that's what's gonna have to be reined when the ZBA looks at it. But the restaurants are approved, so that's not the issue. The issue really comes down to, I believe, is gonna be those coolers.
Yeah, the power, there's a utility pole right out there. They're pulling power off that pole currently in the main building...
Yes.
To bring it back, so they can either come off it and if O and R...
It's just gonna be...
Totally get it, totally get it.
I'm just trying to throw everything out.
Yeah, and I, I threw that out to them as well, so I, I think they're well aware of that piece. But I didn't know, the code, do you know offhand, John or Elizabeth, what code it is that it violates? Which of our codes?
It's the definition, I can, I can pull it real, it's the definition of, of the use, because you can have a principal with an accessory, but you, the whole definition is the definition of accessory use.
Yeah.
Because the accessory use has to be accessory to something on that lot.
So if you had, think of it in your mind, if you had a lot next to you, a residential area, somebody just wanted to build a garage, they can't do that.
Right.
It's accessory use to the principal use, which would be the house. Same thing with these commercial, you can't just have, you know, a dumpster location on a separate lot or a cooler on a separate lot, it has to be associated with the use. So again, that's why they have to go to the ZBA.
So let me ask you a question, John. So the town, in the letter that's in our file, authorized this, they own both. They authorized the use, call it accessory, not, I don't know, they use that language, they authorized the use of that lot for whatever they need it for in conjunction with the restaurant.
But they're two separate...
Lots.
So it doesn't matter what they said.
There's, there's two issues, there's, does the owner of the lot consent to it? So that's issue one, that's a permission title issue.
Right, so that's solved.
They said yes.
Yeah.
And then there is a zoning, a zoning code issue.
Because it's a separate lot.
Because it's a separate lot, also, it's a separate lot that doesn't adjoining.
Adjoining.
Right, it's, there's a space, there's a gap between it.
So I did pull what I have in my file, which is unsigned, which is the unsigned, I believe it was my final draft before, so I don't pay. Ron, I'd ask you to just pull the official resolution for me.
What's the gap?
Wait a minute.
There's a couple of parking spots belonging to somebody else.
No, there's a property between them. Not parking.
So we approved this last March of twenty twenty-two, and granted conditional site plan and special use approval. The conditions in that approval were applicant to address all outstanding comments by Lincoln Tully, and I think it was your March, it was your March second memo. Applicant shall install a dumpster enclosure pursuant to two hundred dash thirty-four F. Such dumpster enclosure shall be approved by the building inspector. Approval is limited to first floor, I'm sorry, I'm desperately trying to hear you. Dining and eleven bar, it was, it was limited to the first floor, fifty-eight dining, eleven bar seats, future phases and signage had to be approved by the planning board. Parking requirements have to be addressed by the building board, that's the pay for lot, pay for space.
Right, in lieu of, right.
In lieu of, okay, but that had to be addressed, fees is pretty standard. We have a condition in here, because it was originally presented us, to us, as Town Monroe leasing. We said that if the property was transferred, which because we anticipated a transfer, that in easement granting rights to use the parking lot or dumpster shall be recorded in the Orange County Landowners. So we need, we needed to confirm that once titled transfer, that that would remain as some, the mechanism would remain there, because right now, it's Town Monroe, Town Monroe, so they're essentially giving themselves permission and their tenant on behalf of themselves. Applicant, and the rest is, is pretty boilerplate, all, you know, applicant to obtain all permits, applicant's comply with noise, or noise ordinance, and then applicant to commence construction within one year pursuant to the code. And then the plan had to be signed once John and I said it was okay to sign. The plan, I understand, was that it was not signed, I don't have any reference that it was. The piece that we did not have when we reviewed this was the walk-in refrigeration units outside the school, outside the...
Right, because the original plan was it would be inside, on the second floor, I think.
There was no cooler on the...
No.
There was no...
Correct.
So that piece is, that piece is the new piece that John and I are looking at, are looking at sort of for the first time, we didn't have it. So in addition to what... So in addition to what John said, just what was submitted to us, a couple of things, was correspondence between the Town of Monroe and Mayor Dwyer that the applicant has permission to use, Town of parking spaces, correspondence between another property owner and Mayor Dwyer, that was earlier this year, that agreeing to the use of shared dumpsters, we got effectively a, what it looks like a photocopy of a, of a survey, and then a photocopy of updated, updated plans. So for my issue of a couple of things, the dumpsters first, what's being suggested is that a couple of property owners will share a dumpster. I have to double check in the code if that's permissible, and I think we can work around that. Right now we have a simple, a, a simple email that's sure they can, they can use it. It doesn't really, it says the restaurant, it, it, no, no, it says, you know. So I would like to see a couple of things. One, a, a more formal agreement, whether it's a license agreement, easement agreement that's recorded amongst whoever is using that dumpster. And then I would also, if, if we don't have an easement in place, I'd like to see the alternative, you know, the, the backup, show us where the dumpster would go, how it would be constructed with permissions, because if the use, if the permission to use the shared dumpster falls through, they, they sell the building and the new owner says, forget you, I, we're not sharing, we're not sharing, and that falls through, we need to have a backup plan for the dumpster, because the use will already be in. So that's, and my phone keeps closing, I'm sorry. So that's one issue. With respect to the coolers, there's what John raised, and then again, easement rights, both electrical easements to get to it, how are we getting, you know, if, if the, the coolers are located in one spot in the parking lot, how are you getting there? Because technically they only have the right to go out and they have to like go all the way, or they have to, you guys have to walk around, you don't have the right to cut across somebody else's property, or you have to get an easement from them to do that. So that's the disadvantage of having those coolers.
Well, the dumpster, the dumpster would be there if it wasn't a shared one, because that was what the plan was last time.
Same, same thing.
Yeah.
The dumpsters, I've seen dumpsters for, that's a little less problematic, because the dumpster doesn't have power or anything, doesn't have power or anything to it. Ultimately, if we absolutely had to move it a heck of a lot easier than if we installed refrigeration.
So pause there for a second, Elizabeth. John, on, so what are the options for anyone, just more of a question? So if the utility pole is within a few feet of there, and that utility pole already powers the De Angelis building, it's possible, I think, you know, the architect even talked to them about, you're sending wire back and down to the, to the ground.
You can't accept that wire now because it's private wire, it's crossing over, see the whole thing.
Another.
It crossed over somebody else's.
Property, yes. So I think, and, you know, Luis, you'll have to tell us, did you have discussions at all with, who's the owner of the other property, anyway? I don't even know.
So far, I have admitted, I know the, so far I understand that the two owners of the private space is the one in 13 Lake Street, owns the building, he owns those five private spaces behind that building.
What's the address, 13 what? Lake Street?
The market.
So you're 50, so the market?
Whoever owns that, you say.
So whoever owns the building, he owns those five private spaces.
The five that are right behind the building?
Yes, correct.
Then beyond that, or you're five or six?
Six.
Six.
The town.
The town, right, we're talking about that.
So eliminating, because we're putting, again, coolers there, now you've eliminated those parking spaces, which then ends up going back to the village board, because they don't have enough parking, but they're in the central business district, so.
So you don't need, right, then it's the whole.
Oh, just so you know, because I know this is kind of overwhelming, we're just kind of spitting things out there, but the most important thing is because the timing and it's expired, they have to make a submission on the land use form to the building department.
To the zoning, oh, to the building department, right.
Building department, they'll tell them what they need, which is going to be, you're going to need a zoning of ZBA variance, and again, they're going to have to reapply for the site plan and special use, because that has expired now, which is, you can't extend it beyond when it was, because it's already expired. So they're going to have to, even though we know the process and nothing's going to change much, they have to make that reapplication.
Right.
It all starts with the land use form with your building department, because once he does that and they make the submission, then we can actually put these comments in writing so they actually have them.
Right.
Just kind of throwing them out, and I don't expect you to remember them all, because it's kind of overwhelming, but that's the whole thing. But everything drives through the ZBA, having those coolers on a lot, a separate lot with not adjoining. And even if it was adjoining, if it was adjoining, you could do a lot line change, merge the two lots, you could do it, but because they're separate, you don't have that option.
Yeah.
And the same thing, just so the board knows, you don't do this because the town could ever, could sell that one lot with the coolers off to somebody else.
Right.
Who said, I own a bar, you know, a block and a half away, and I need those coolers, and I'll give you X amount of dollars for it, and then the whole, it's a whole issue, so.
So Luis, in your purchase contract from the town to purchase the building, those lots don't go with it.
No, it's a.
So that would remain, if you bought that building tomorrow, the lots would still remain a rental between you and the town? Is that right?
That's, that's.
That's got to be a backup, right.
That's why you have that whole regulation where you have to have it all on one lot, because that could happen.
That could definitely happen over there.
Yeah, exactly. Then you wouldn't have cooler, even though you probably have to pay for the coolers to be installed, so it's a whole.
Yeah, you want to lock that one down.
How would you be getting the power there, overhead or under?
Typically, in a new development, you require underground.
Under, right, yeah.
So normally you take the pole, they trench it over to where the coolers are, but again, I don't know if that pole can handle, I haven't seen it, so, you know, but he has three or four coolers there, which are using more than 110, you know, volts.
And then that would create an easement on that property, right?
Yes.
You would, you would have to get that, yeah.
I'm going to just ask, I'm going to throw it out there, and I think I don't really answer it, there's no way you can get refrigeration inside a building, there's not much of that. Because if we can get refrigeration in this building.
Then it's just a reapproval.
Right, then it's, then it's solved.
Yes, I get what you're, you know what I'm.
I was going to ask the same thing.
Is that possible?
No?
You know, I like to protect the product, which lasts very much, a lot of us, I can just have one cooler in the second floor, but it's going to be a lot of risk, so just not have.
Space, yeah.
Yeah, it's not, I just have one cooler.
There's no empty spots in the marketplace next door, are there? Because he's, it's, it's a shorter, it's, it's a shorter walk than the parking lot.
At least one of them, right?
They have, again, not knowing the history, but if the town owns those six spaces, and a neighbor owns those five spaces, you know, realistically, the town and that owner could swap those spaces, then.
I'm sorry, they tried.
They did.
And if we won these five places, I think there are two owners, one wants it, the other one doesn't agree, so that's why it failed. But that was the main thing.
Right.
That's why it took us too long, and we put everything forward.
Because the, the dumpster is not really an accessory, we can say the dumpster is not really an accessory starship. The refrigeration units are an accessory starship.
The dumpsters, we can move, but again, the dumpsters, they have shared dumpsters on the place, so.
Yeah, the dumpsters were, again, that's why we, when we approved it last year, we were willing to work with those issues, that it's really, it's really the refrigeration units, and, and how.
Yeah, that was a subsequent issue.
Typically, they're right, typically they're immediately behind the facility, they're right.
And you know what the tough thing, I think, too, one of the big difficulties here, that, again, from the town and village being the two governing entities, their building inspector approved permits, they built it out already.
Yeah.
We didn't have an approved plan for them. And yet, they could do that, in, like, that, if it was all under one entity, that wouldn't have happened that way.
Right, they wouldn't have gotten a permit.
Right, to do that.
Yeah.
Jim wouldn't have issued.
And I think, I think that's where government did a great disservice to them, tremendous.
I completely agree.
Yeah. And, you know, even with that, I mean, we can't waive fees because it's not in our jurisdiction, but I think we should kick it to the village board and say, I don't think they should have to pay for the reapplication, I just don't think so. You know what I mean? Or the, because we're going to re-approve the same exact thing, except with the addition of the.
With the coolers.
With the coolers.
I don't know, I mean, that's, that's a tough ask for a ZBA to grant that variance. I mean, it's not like a sidearm setback over 20 feet to 19 feet, you know, coolers on their own lot, which is going to be rented to these guys. If they're going to sell them both the lots, okay, it kind of makes sense, but when they're only renting the one and selling the other, it gets a little complicated. So if you have a 99-year lease to document those coolers staying there, so I think it wasn't, I don't think it was a disservice from the village point of view, because it wasn't.
No, it's just that, it's just that why we, why the village would have allowed them, the town, to be the inspector on a village property.
I don't think they did.
But, but I, I don't know that they didn't either. You know what I'm saying? Like, if we put our foot down then, again, it couldn't be us, it's, the village board would have had to do it if they were brought into it, but the, because what ends up, you know, happening here, like, and I know one of the things, that, well, they're, they're a town property, so, you know, using the balancing test and everything else, we don't have to, to do that, but the balance test is not for you to rent out to a, a business, so that should have got shut down like right there.
Yeah, I know, and I believe the village tried, but it gets into politics and village versus town.
Right, and that's why I say they got caught in this crossfire, and I don't think they should pay the penalty for that. That's what I, you know what I mean?
Yeah, once they do the land use and they come here, or when they, you can actually, you know, recommend to the village board.
Board, right.
That they waive it.
Yeah.
That's your guy.
So.
The first thing is land use so we can get this all right.
Yeah, so. So Elizabeth, do you have a list that we just put there that we could put together for Sammy?
What do you mean a list?
Of what, you know, like what John was just saying, so first order business, you know.
Well, I think, once they do the first order business, which is the land use.
Right, through our building department.
Building department.
Here.
Then everything goes, because once he has that and then make application, because he's going to say first and make application to the planning board and to the ZBA. They make that application, then we get the plans, the real plans that we can look at on our phone and on a photocopy.
Yeah.
And actually give them all the review comments that we just kind of discussed today.
And, and what should do, you're not giving us your, your update, so like your secret form that you gave us last time, you revise it, you're just submitting it with a new.
Same thing.
Revision date, you know? So any, there may be slight changes to it because of, the coolers and things like that, but you're not like wholesaling, starting over, using that as a base to your information.
Yeah, you can use all your other existing information, that's a good point.
Yep.
So if you're not starting from scratch, it's not going to cost you a portion to redo it.
Right.
You do have to go through the motions. So the first thing is land use for the building department, and then you can start moving down every day.
So Luis, did you speak to, is the town a firm no on selling the parking spots to go with the property?
To be honest, we haven't talked about it. I told him, it would be nice if we put something in the lease to buy in the future, but that's not been done yet, so I'm hoping to add that.
So if all goes well for you and your timing, when is the purchase going to happen of the building?
I'm closing my fingers in a couple of weeks.
So it'll be a couple of weeks? So I, I'm going to recommend something, I think you should talk to whoever, whether it's Tony Cardone or whoever you're dealing with over there, and tell them what you're up against at the moment, that to, to go to the, you know, ZBA and for the ZBA to approve a lot that's separate from, unless the town's willing to give you, like John said, a 50-year lease on those spots, in that case, they might as well sell it to you.
Yeah, they got to do something. Again, it's more to protect than you as well.
Right, it is, that's a big piece.
The town supervisor's changed, I think you did have a different supervisor.
Absolutely.
Then it's like, yeah, guess what, your rent just went up $500,000 or, you know, we're ripping them out, so, again, it's more to protect you. So if you're closing in two weeks, you should talk to an attorney, have some contingency in there.
Yeah. Yeah, because that's, that's something that will be a real problem, because if, like John said, if that happens after the fact and a new supervisor comes in and they say, we want those properties now for something else, then you're going to have to either move your whole restaurant again, or relocate it and take the space that you've already built out for what you're doing in there, and that's, that's a nightmare. So I think that's, that's good, good wisdom there, I think that's important, you know? All right, so, yeah, I would recommend then just come into the building department, that land use form will take you five minutes, you know, to put together, and then Jim will tell you whether you got to go to ZBA or not, which is probably going to be the case, but, and so start that ball rolling, and I would get right over to the town and talk to, who, are you dealing with Tony directly, or are you dealing with Sal, or?
Both.
Both of them. So I would just grab whoever you can get that's available and have that discussion, because that has to be a quick thing, and, I don't know, I'd hate to see you close on something when that's in the, hanging in the breeze, you know what I mean? So you might want to just get, get the ducks in a row that way, have, have that worked out somehow. So they could give you, like John said, they can give you a long-term lease, you know?
But I, I still think it, it all needs to, it all needs to be, it's not just, it's a multi, I just, I want to be clear, like, yes, you get the long-term lease, we still have to address.
Oh, so through the ZBA, it's much more easier for the ZBA to.
Correct, correct. And they'll understand that, they, they deal with, they're ZBA, you know, it's, they're dealing with the same thing, so they'll understand it, you know? And, so, sorry you guys are going through this.
Luis, I just wanted to let you know, I'm also the ZBA secretary.
[laughing].
Oh, no! And the next submission date for the ZBA is November 14th. All right? It's the same as the planning board, you're going to have a deadline.
Yeah.
And the ZBA is very picky, so please, if you have any questions in the application, come see me, write an email, I'll help you through it, because if everything's not in that application, it's not going anywhere. All right?
Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
And if you have.
Should they hold off on closing?
Please, I would highly.
Hold off on closing?
Counsel.
I would, I would not, I wouldn't. You push back two weeks on closing, get them to deal with that. Otherwise, that's like, you're not.
Committed, I mean, you know?
Right.
Maybe don't rush to close, just make sure you got these answers for sure, I'm not giving you any legal advice.
I'm, I'll tell you, I.
Maybe don't rush to close until you got these answers.
Luis, I'd consider talking to the marketplace. I don't know what they charge you for rent, I don't know what that is over there, but I don't think.
I have talked to them. The space that was above was all way back, but somehow that was a text in Zoom, they couldn't have walked back from the back.
Of the building inside? They couldn't have, they couldn't because of their plans or code?
The code, I think it was, because that was the second thing that we have in mind, since the, behind the building space wasn't available, so we were moving to the, to the building in the back, and somehow they figured out that code was not going to work there, because I was thinking of walking back.
So just real quick, because I didn't walk back there, but between the back of the building and your six spots, is it just pavement, is it just those parking spots?
Just those parking spots.
Okay.
Then there's an easement that runs along there as well, which shows on their survey.
For people to walk through, as a walk, with easement for. For people to wa- walk through, as a walk, with easement for.
On the outside of it, I'm not sure what it's.
Okay.
Yeah, and, well, we have the alleyway defenders, and I think it might be a priority to, to be honest with you.
I have a little, a little space between the parking space and the, and the, and the space underneath, to walk all the way down, and I think that space be owned by the town too, because I was asking, what about if they push me to excavate it, to grind, to run the power.
Underneath? From the building?
From the building, so if it was the same, that being owned by the town, uh, I would just need to get something, just from the, from the town, so I can excavate, get power from the building, under the ground, to get to the walking boxes. But they were saying it was easy for me, and less money to spend, or just get a power back from the building.
Over the top. But John's right, so by code, I think you would need an easement for, to do that from the other property owner, which is the marketplace, right? Because you're going over the top, unless it goes, is it, does?
The pole is close to the, to the.
Pole, right there, so.
Right, it's right there, but does it go over the marketplace's property?
No.
It's just on town property, from building to there?
Yeah.
So there wouldn't, so would he need an easement from the town, then?
Just the power will go back same line to the pole, and from the pole, we're right on top of the walking boxes. If the pole is close to the walking boxes, I'm gonna go, it's not going on the top of the, out of my space, private space.
And it's all gonna be metered, and I'm sure, they can work that out.
Right.
One more thing, one more thing that you're gonna have to jump.
Yeah, and you wanna get, like, I, I'm just gonna tell you, to encourage you to, to get that stuff worked out before you do your closing, that's what, you know?
I'm gonna have one week, probably, to work on, and do what is happening.
Yeah, so bring, I'd bring every, all your stuff, bring it over to the town to talk to those guys, just get a meeting, and, so you don't have to go looking for stuff, or they don't, just put it out in front of them and say, what can you do here? And here's what I'm up against. So. Yes.
Because in a piece of paper, the way they talk, it, it sounds, and it looks easy.
Right, they're finding solutions, not looking at codes, they're finding, you know, they're just saying, yes, this is, this is possible, you could do this, we can get power to it.
Oh, yeah, we can do that.
Yep.
I'm sure you've heard that a lot, oh, yeah, we can do that.
Yeah.
And they call us.
It's gonna be two years, I mean, I don't know, so, uh, I think I gotta work it out there. But, uh, going back to the dumpster, that's another reason I asked for the extra space, just to have a Plan B.
Right.
In case that's.
Right, in case the other thing didn't work out.
Yeah, we'll need, we'll need some form of, a more detailed easement, I, I'd really like to have an easement, but if not a license, and that's, that's an agreement between whoever's using that shared dumpster, um, but, I would like, just on the site plan, where, where it would go in the case in the event that that fell through, so that when that, if that falls through, the building inspector simply says, okay, guys, it fell through, go build your, go build your dumpster.
Right.
So, I just, once you're in, we gotta have someone for the trash to go.
Sounds good, it sounds good.
Any other questions you have?
Not that much, not so much, so it's.
Okay, yeah, so, not that you needed another headache at the busiest time of the season coming into the restaurant world, but, um, start with the building department, just get that in there, and see what Jim says where to go, then it's probably gonna be the zoning board, so just get an application, and even if you end up not needing to go there, get it in. You could always write.
I'll send it to you on Thursday, I'll send you the calendar, um, I was wrong on the date, it's November seventh, um, and I'll send you the application and the guidelines, there's a, a document you just read, and it'll help you with the guidelines on the ZBA, um, application.
The submission is the seventh.
The submission date for the ZBA is November seventh. All right, you're welcome.
I'm coming tomorrow morning, so.
Yeah, perfect. Yeah.
If you have any questions, have to give me a call, and then I can bring you up the speakers, you got it? That's great, I will.
All right, guys? No, thank you, good luck with everything. Local laws?
Listen, I get to say that you.
Yes, John, before, John dutifully, cause I said, the two oh eight public hearing.
Yes.
We have scheduled, we have set the public hearing by resolution at, at our September meeting, or the twenty-eighth. We can do, I, I, one of two things, we can either have it here, um, the twenty-eighth is not available at town hall, um, we could maintain the twenty-eighth habit here, or we can reschedule, um, but.
For an available date at the town hall?
For an available date at the town hall.
Which, did we check on those?
Yes, and I already sent them an email that had three possible dates.
They didn't get back yet?
Yeah, Charles.
See you, John.
Charles Gottlieb got back to me today, and he said it would have to be either a Monday or a Wednesday.
I saw that.
Um, but he would have to check with everybody else on the dates.
So, the easiest is just to leave it here.
Right here.
And, do you think we're gonna have?
Well, then you can continue it if you had to.
We can continue it.
So, that's the solution, and, I, I'd say we just do it here, because trying to coordinate all those people.
Yeah, I agree.
It's gonna be.
It is turning into an nightmare, cause it's just, yeah.
So then, we'll just, I'll prepare the public notice, that it's here.
Okay.
Now that I do resolve that process, um, and again, um, two oh eight.
And that's November twenty-eighth?
Yes.
Then you need to get it to me very quickly, cause it's twenty-fourth.
Yeah, it's gotta be posted. Right?
The public notice has to.
Two weeks, right?
So I can send it to them, to mail everything out, along with the address.
I know, I've got thirty days.
Okay.
You're scaring me, like, as if you needed it, like, tomorrow, because you have a time crunch.
No, in my mind, everything's a time crunch lately, but yes, I do need it as soon as you can get it, so.
I think that's not.
Cause on their side, they have a lot of paperwork.
The way you said that, I was thinking, oh my gosh, you need it in two days.
All right, which one, uh, you wanna do, the non-conforming bulk?
Yeah, hand your phone, give me one second.
Or the floor area ratio?
Where is the router, is it in this room or in the other room, just so I know?
Cause it's.
I have no idea, I actually don't know.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm getting it.
Andy, do you know where the router is?
You're on?
Yeah.
Uh, the BOM is locked, I see it on my phone.
Oh, okay.
No, I see it, it connects.
Well, I'm.
I can't connect.
I'm connected.
You're connected?
You're breaking it, it's your fault.
I'm, I'm connected.
I'm connected.
But mine says connected without internet.
Yeah, that's what mine says.
Yeah, connected without internet.
Mine says connected without internet, I've never heard.
That's gotta be a setting in your, wait, what are you using, Elizabeth, on your phone?
My laptop, I'm using my cellphone right now.
What kinda laptop is it?
The same laptop I use every meeting.
No, no, is it an Apple or a, uh?
No, it's a, it's a HD.
Are you on public, I should hear? It's up here.
I'll tell you what it's on.
I, mine always, mine keeps defaulting to public, but it says connected without internet, though.
Okay, it's fine, so, at our work session, we had two local laws to review, um, they're relatively minor changes, the first was amendments to the floor area ratios, the amendment effectively got rid of the grandfather, so, existing subdivisions that might not be built, so approved subdivisions, um, that might not be built out, those new homes, under the old code, under the current code, they just can have to comply with FAR, of the floor area ratio, under the proposed changes, they would have to comply with the floor area ratio, we discussed it, I'm using the four questions that are in our, as part of our statutory analysis, this is what I've drafted on your behalf, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, um, whether the change is consistent with the aims and principles embodied in the chap- chapter as to the district, particular districts concerned, the proposed local law is a limited revision of the floor area ratio regulations, under the existing provisions, the FAR regulations do not apply to approved but unbuilt subdivisions, the unintended consequence was that existing subdivisions be built with homes far in excess of the current FAR regulations, resulting in out-of-character homes, the elimination of this exemption is consistent with the goals of the zoning code. The next question, which areas, land uses, buildings, and establishments in the village will be directly affected by such change, and in what way will it, they be affected? These changes will affect residential districts and properties, it simply requires existing unbuilt subdivisions in compliance with the FAR regulations when they're, when they are actually constructed. The next question, indirect implications of such change and its effects on other regulations, and I wrote not identified, and then, the last question, whether such proposed amendment is consistent with the aims of the comprehensive plan, I wrote, the comprehensive plan seeks to address homes that are out of character with the surrounding residential neighborhood by regulating FAR, the proposed local law is in furtherance of that effort, and therefore is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
So, is this saying that if you have an approved subdivision, but yet unbuilt?
Yes.
Now you have to follow the new changes?
You have to follow.
So, shovel, doesn't matter if it's shovel ready or not, if you didn't start building, if you didn't put the shovel in the ground, and that's the breakpoint.
So, most times, when you do a subdivision approval, your subdivision approval does a rough, there's a box on a map, you know, approximately twenty-five hundred square-foot home, it's gonna, now, we're in the village, we're not in the town, so we don't have to worry about septic, usually in the town, you have to worry about septic.
Right.
Um, you know, it's gonna, you know, these are gonna be, we're calculating these at three or four bedrooms, whatever, and so there's a range, you can build a house in this range, right? Theoretically, under an approved subdivision, even though it has that box, they can go, yeah, we're gonna build a, a four-foot McMansion, maxing out, maxing out the setbacks, and they'd still be within the confines of the law, but it would be this very big enormous house.
Right, out of character, yeah.
Out of character, so what they're saying is, that's no, if it's not built yet, you have to comply, not only with the bulk standard.
Yeah, I think that's a great law.
Right, and not only with the bulk standards, you have to comply with the FAR, so, um, there are lots of subdivisions that haven't been, you know, um, Smith Farm is, is still in the process of being built.
Yeah, it's gonna be a nightmare over there.
Well, but, any of those homes would have, now that's in the town, but I'm just using it as an example, that those, the unbuilt parts in the town. Right now, they would only have to comply with setbacks, and could just go as big as, that would fit, physically fit.
Right, put it right to the, yeah, setback, that's it.
Right, exactly, and there would be nothing Jim could do about it.
Yeah, this gives it the teeth, yeah.
This is to regulate, and again, that floor area ratio is the size of lot divided by the total.
Yes.
So, um, if you have a one-story house, you can have a slightly bigger footprint, because you don't have as much floor space than a two-story house, so you can have a skinny or taller, you know, fatter but shorter.
And you're in longhouse.
So, um, if I, are there any changes to that right up?
No, I think that's, I think it's good.
Can I have a motion, please, and that's the.
We need a motion for, uh.
I'll make that motion.
The FAR law, the new, for the approval of the, uh, number four of two, twenty-one here? That's not the number, though.
That's the amendments to, yeah, okay, for a second.
Does that a second?
Brad?
Yeah, the amendment to local law. All in favor?
Aye.
Reposed? Motion carries?
Okay, next one, this again is also a, um, local laws, this was, um, again, regulating the bulk, so if you had an existing setback, um, whether you were grandfathered or you had gotten a variance, so let's say the setback is twenty feet, and your house goes to the fifteen-foot line, you could not expand that side.
Right.
In any direction, so you couldn't go up, you couldn't go.
Long, back.
Long, right, now, you could have an offset where your second floor starts at the twenty-foot line and over, okay, but you can't add into that, you can't increase the bulk on that non-conforming wall without coming to the ZBA.
Right.
Because, as you know, if you've got a setback, um, you know, you, the neighbor's house is fifteen feet from your house, well, one story is very different from two stories, and the wall.
So if you have a shed there, and you wanna take it down and replace it?
No, that has nothing to do with.
Didn't, but it's in that space, oh, because, because it's separate, it's not the, just the house?
We're talk, this, this is.
It's not encroaching the space with anything, then?
This would apply, it appears to apply to.
Extending the house.
Accessory, this applies to principles and accessories?
Well, that would be an accessory, then.
So, what you couldn't do is, if you've got, you know, an eight-by-ten shed, and it's over the, it's over the setback, and you wanted to make it a, you know, ten-by-twenty shed, and it was on that plane.
Can't do it.
Can't do it, you could make a ten-by-twenty shed going the other way, away from the setback, that would be okay, but you couldn't expand it on that plane.
Yep.
So, any other questions before I do this? Um, again, first question, whether the change is consistent with the aims and principles in the zoning code? The proposed local law is a limited revision of the provisions addressing nonconformities and expansion of those nonconformities, under the existing provisions, a property owner can greatly increase the bulk by extending the wall either vertically or horizontally, this creates greater bulk, which should be reviewed by the zoning board of appeals. This is consistent with the aims of the zoning code and comprehensive plan, which areas, land uses, buildings, and establishments will be affected, the changes will affect residential districts and properties, it merely requires ZBA, uh, zoning board of appeals review where there is an existing nonconformity, um, direct implications not identified, um, then is it consistent with the comp plan? The comprehensive plan seeks to address homes that are out of character with the surrounding residential neighborhood, the proposed local law is in furtherance of that effort, and there is therefore consistent with the comprehensive plan.